Yeah, no, that's why. So again, thank you for coming. Obviously, I don't have to come up, Manny. So again, thank you for coming. Our theme is summer fun. And so I'm chief operating officer. You know, Manny loves to do these things. Would like to be here, but he had to. And again, I want to divulge his personal business, but Mr. Got put in hospice. So he jumped on the plane yesterday to go. Deal with that. And so if you're one of those people that prays for others, then that'd be greatly appreciated. So I'm going to do town hall, the B team and. I'll work work hard to read these slides. So this is our agenda for today. So first, we're gonna, you know, two thousand twenty two is a year of excellence. So we're going to go through some of the results so far for that. There's been. A lot of results. They're good. I talk about culture of safety at Turo. We're also going to talk about hurricane preparedness. I am going to spend. A decent amount of time talking about security because that's something where we've gotten a lot of requests to discuss. Of course, ask the COO and then everybody's favorite door prizes. So again, two thousand twenty two is the year of excellence. That's what Manny had talked about the last town hall. He sort of gives a theme to every year. And then, you know, here, if you actually look at the goals for the year of excellence, they are excellence and culture of safety, excellence and care for our patients and excellence and workplace culture. So it, you know, some of the things that we've achieved so far in two thousand twenty two is. We've actually was abandoned cath lab. We've taken it and upgraded. That's now cath lab four. It's has Tavr capability. EP expanded EP capability. We also upgraded cath lab two. And so I think with that platform. It gives us among the best or maybe the best cath lab setup in the city before fully functional cath labs are under three years old. We put in a new MRI. The other MRI was a great MRI was fifteen years old. State R MRI cardiac cardiac MRI capabilities, much faster, much more precise, also has some AI functions. That allows us to do more. We did our first Taver. I've done five to date. M nine unit was renovated and, you know, that unit really frankly needed it. Probably last done in the eighties, I would guess, and. It was really needed a lot of renovation. And, you know, as a part of the move to allow rehab to go to entirely private rooms, which they have and will, which I think that's what their patients really need. We've been, L C S C spent about three million dollars upgrading the whole kind of cooling heating system of the hospital. Three new chillers, three new boilers, several replacement of PowerPoints. And so, you know, that's obviously going to give us a new system that works more efficiently. Cools better, heats better. A lot of things date back to when a lot of these buildings were built. And some of these buildings were built anywhere from the thirties to the sixties. So we literally had fifty year old equipment in there. We were able to replace a lot of that or replace gets all that work behind the hospital on the street. You see trucks every day, cranes out there. That's all due to that. That will also help us in hurricanes, like for instance, I just mentioned M nine. And nine's not had air conditioning for the storms. They're not going to have AC parts six will have AC, other areas will have expanded AC. Out of cell rollout. So that's actually going on right now. It's we started with surgery. Every single omnicell dispenser in this entire hospital will be replaced, all whatever seventy of them. Three point three million dollars to do this. So it will give us stay the our omnicell systems that allow us to link to a lot of other systems. Better links to systems and Epic, better links to things like Pandora and pharmacy. Very important, just, you know, for you nurses and actually other caregivers too that work in the omniscient. We have other people that do work in omniscience, including radiology and respiratory. You know, like for instance, this case in Tennessee with Mrs. Faunt, the nurse. You know, while this wasn't the entire cause, part of it was related to the how the their version of the omniscient work. They had a. Appeared to be a very outdated medication dispensing cabinet system. And so again, these. Have safeguards that they apparently didn't have there that will protect our patients and also even our caregivers. And dispensing medications and in a pharmacy, we're going to it's about one point four million. The IV room will be replaced. You know, the government's pushing a new standard called USP hundred. It isn't required yet in the state of Louisiana by the state board pharmacy, but it is coming and it's again a whole new. Set of an of safety procedures for IV rooms. So they'll get a new IV room that starts in August. And then excellence and workplace culture. L C M C was recently recognized as Becker's Healthcare Top one hundred fifty employer. That list includes everyone in this country, all hospitals, five thousand hospitals. Insurance companies, HMOs, medical device companies, drug companies, and L C M C was in the top one fifty that only one in the state of Louisiana. So culture of safety at Turo. So, you know, I know in the town halls, including in the last town hall, Manny's. Put up our our quality dashboard. And this is the first part through April, the first four months of two thousand twenty two. If you notice, I don't know if y'all remember when he put up two thousand twenty ones at the last one, the final results, we had no red, red is bad. You want green and blue. We would only hospital L C M C with no red. We've unfortunately started out with some red. This is, there's some good things on this board and then some bad things. And. Just to call your attention, you know, overall rating, this is through April, you'll see a. A different number a little bit later, a little bit different number because we're going through May there, but this is through April. But. You know, last year we finished somewhere around, I think, seventy eight point nine. Now we're, you know, that through April, we're eighty one point nine. So improvement there. Your overall rating is great at seventy point seven five highest in L C M C. Except for children's medical practice is great rating. That's blue. We've been getting good ratings there. Obviously, we have no, you know, up until then, we know class fees, no SSIs. Preventable harm, which this is for the hospital right here. And last year, we finished the great score of one point zero five. Lower is obviously better. We're one to one. We're a little bit below the norm of. L C M C, they're actually one, two, three right now. But, you know, we want to get that as low as we can and back to a one point oh five. And that's a combination of infections, fall with injury, so on. So obviously, you want to reduce those things. And again, you know, we talked about infections. You know, these are really infections that people get when it comes to the hospital and, you know, our goal is a hospital should be. You know, people come here, we treat their infections, not give them an infection, right? So that's why all this is stuff we don't want to see and it's bad. So again, we're in the red for calling CDF Mercer. I know that the care teams are working hard on this. With EBS, we're treating, we got the device team is out rounding, doing different things. So. We'll continue to work on this, but this is something that we, you know, we're just telling a group we do need to improve on because obviously, again, like I said, we don't. We have interest in giving our patients infections. You know, this, this is the same data, but breaks it down by month. I will tell you, there's some trends there, you know, overall hospital rating, I just talked about, we were up. From where a prior year, but we did see a dip in April and we're also gonna, I'll show you, we have a different May, but I know. Probably some of that's related to joint commission preparation. So now the joint commission is gone, we need to get back to really working on that, doing our aid at doing our rounding, doing those things there. This is our H cap scorecard and that gets back to that top score. It's actually the May thirty first because we get this data real time. As opposed to affection data, we don't get real time. We haven't seen maze yet. At this time, it's dropped down to eighty point eight. And that's because of May. May was a seventy six point five at the top. Again, score is better than prior year by about two percentage points, which is good. So I mean, that's good improvement. And I appreciate that. But I like to, you know, see if we get that score a little bit higher, have it in the. Eighty two range would be great for us. That would again, put us among the top or the top at L C M C. It puts them on the top of the city. It's a good score. Again, you know, when you look at the score, it's a net promoter thing. So. What this is saying is that eighty point eight people through May gave us a nine or ten, you know, one at one out of ten. Eighty percent gave us a nine or ten. And and so that's a good effort. It's improvement. We'd love to see a little bit, little bit better. Ultra safety, recertified in primary stroke. For leapfrog, we achieved the grade B. We've been a C for a long time. You know, leapfrog is sometimes about how you present the data and what you, you know, do you have certain functions in here like a hospitalist and intensivist service? Those greatly helped to leapfrog score. So we were C for a long time. We never felt like we were C ever. And we achieved the B. And I think, you know, we're kind of borderline. I think next time we recertify, there's a great chance or good chance or some chance. We'll get to an A, which is a great score. You know, there's not a lot of A facilities in the city. EJ vacillates to an A. Most L C M C facilities are C or B. And then there are several, there are several auction facilities, which you'll like to mention auction. There are As, but you know, we really feel like we're in a hospital. We need to get there. So we put a lot of things in place to do that. Achieve birth ready plus our sister facilities that deliver are birth ready. We're actually birth ready plus, which is a much harder designation achieved. I know there's a lot of work by the L and D team and the doctors. Just went through CARF, right before joint commission, really a week before joint commission. For rehab, that were car for credited in six areas. We got full recreditation, had a great survey. They really did a great job and I appreciate all the work that the rehab team put into that. Becoming CARF credited in six areas is very, very difficult. I really don't think there's any one in the state that has that, including. At the bottom, cancer rehab with the STAR program, there are eighteen of those in the country and we're one of them. So. And that's something we offer cancer patients and finally joint commission, triennial. So, you know, we went through it a couple of weeks ago. A lot of good, a lot of bad, to be honest with you, just to tell you. The good is, is that, you know, what they call RFIs or tags or citations, whatever term you want to use. Really didn't get a lot of those. The the surveyors were very complimentary about Turo and talked about, you know, obviously the. The great staff we had, the great care we give, how really, you know, they go on surveys and they get to a unit and everybody runs away. Well, this case, they said staff is very engaged and very involved and they appreciated that. So, you know, if you look at the number citations, it was really pretty low for a hospital this size, our report was. Pretty skinny and you want a skinny report, not a fat report. Fat report's bad. Skinny report's good. A skinny report, but you know, we had two major findings and. We really don't want any major findings. They're really all involved around infection control. And so with those major findings, we'll come back in forty five days and we're veto's major findings. We've already submitted to action plans. We're already ready for them. They'll come back and do that. You know, there's a lot of things with infection control. Again, they're really narrowing on and there's things that. You know, we may consider be nitpicky, but they're always thinking about. And I'll give you an example. One of the findings we got was for tape residue. In patient care areas. And so they're really homing on. The idea that, you know, you had something taped there and now there's residue left and you're not cleaning that. So we may find that picky, but. That's where they're going right now because they believe that those things lead to infection control issues later on. So. That was actually one of, you know, related to one of the findings. So a lot of infection control stuff. I'll continue to work on that. Security and safety. So I want to talk a lot about this one because really we've been again, getting a lot of things about this. You know, you have the idea that the city councils ask for national guard, which the. Governor's not willing to approve. You have a lack of police officers, you have rising crime, you've had some issues around here in the neighborhood. Had break-ins on the street. We've actually had a couple of break-ins in the garage. We obviously had the thing that six or seven months ago, we had a some gunfire on the other side of Medical Arts. There are police actually made the arrest and detained somebody. So, you know, I know there's a lot of concerns there in there across the city and including at Turo. About, you know, again, our obligations to do whatever we can to provide a safe environment. So. You know, we've really decided to do a lot of upgrades and improvements with our security team. So. You know, we've given the security team more positions. Like a lot of things out there, they've struggled at times higher because there's just a lot of competition out there, but we've. Increased some things, improved some things for them. And I think. Right now, we're on the cusp of really being fully staffed and that's important. I'll tell you why that's important for us. We haven't been fully staffed in a while. Plus, we've, you know, again, upgraded some positions now. They've hired a bunch of people in. They're great people. They have a lot of experience and our team already is, you know, pretty experienced. We know. We're for you, four hundred combined years of law enforcement, military experience. A lot of people are ex cops. And we've been able to, again, recruit people that have, you know, police, a lot of police experience. Either or military experience or even military peace experience. And that's important because. You know, that makes it easier for the train and assimilate them and bring them in and have them, you know, benefit, you know, provide benefit. As quickly as possible. But the reason why we need to be fully staffed is a couple of things. So what I want to see. In the hospital is in all shifts and all times, at least five officers on duty. And they are what they're going to be is we're going to have someone at the ER, someone at the L and D, someone at the front desk and then have two officers on patrol. Around the area there, patrolling the hospital, walking the hospital, walking the garages, want more visibility in all the garages there. And then during the day, I want to see seven to eight officers. So with that, I also want to have officers at thirty seven fifteen Britannia. Which is the MOB down the road here at the back where we have outpatient rehab and cardiology and a couple of this back clinics. An officer during the day, all day at thirty seven hundred, St. Charles, which is across from Superior with that park. That's where we have multiple clinics. Also, officer all day Napoleon. We are augmenting officers at CCPI clinics, but that will be mostly, you know, because of the parameters and moving people around. We're using a lot of outsourced labor. Outsource security, third party security to cover the CCPI clinics in the community, but we're going to continue to have that, increase that. And then, you know, with me having two free officers. Sometimes even three free officers during the daytime, what I can do is I want to see a police presence. Especially during peak times. When I say peak times, especially like six thirty to seven thirty during the morning, six thirty, seven thirty during the day. Where I have security out waiting, you know, for people that park in Chestnut. And they can come into the hospital. So you have a police presence there that's on that path, a police presence in in Medical Plaza. So they come out of that. I know there's concerns because that garage is dark. We're going to talk about that in a second. But, you know, patrolling that garage, but also having that presence there along that path into the hospital and then people that park in Medical Arts. We've already started instituting shifts where we have, you know, people out there. And I know. In the last one, they talked, you know, told me that they're seeing the officers out there more and more and more. And that's what we want, especially as we move into fall. We start getting dark at the six thirty night shift. And then, you know, in the spring, when we're dark and the six thirty morning shift. So we want to make sure we have that police presence. Now, what came up in the last meeting, just to tell you is that, you know, people have asked me about. Metal detectors. We've talked about metal detectors a lot as a ministry team, a lot. And there's a lot of studies, a lot of data, a lot of discussions, a big discussion among administrators. All of the country, you know, at this point in time, we've decided not to have metal detectors. I'm not saying we're never going to do it. This is uniform really among a lot of hospitals. There are some pros to metal detectors and there's a lot of cons to metal detectors. So at that point, we decided not to get moved to that situation. I just wanted to talk about that because I get a lot of questions about should we have metal detectors or not? Should we have metal detectors in selected areas like say the ER or L and D? Again, we've elected not to do that this time there because of really the. For us, in our opinion, and when we review the data, a lot, just like in a lot of places, the cons really outrun outrule the pros right now. So that's kind of our stance and our thought on metal detectors. I just talked about where we're positioning people. We consistently train and are going to continue to train on active shooter. And accurate shooters become an important term and important thing right now because of what happened at Sport Texas. You know, that was a situation there where they were supposedly trained in active shooter, but for some reason they didn't enact their policies. And then the consequences appears that, you know, that cost people their lives in that situation. If they had followed exactly what their training told them, followed their policy, then I think the thought process is less children would be dead. With the school in Texas. And so again, this is important to us because of should we ever have this situation? We need to make sure our security team and our team can react and deal with it as best they can for that scenario. So, you know, consistently training, we're doing that. Our guys go through two sets of training every year, including firearms training. With a SWAT certified firearms instructor out at St. Bernard. We also are unifying their weapon systems. You know, I want our officers to have the same kind of weapon system and the same resources. As they would be if they were JPSO or NOPD or something like that. Also, we want it uniformed. That way they can share equipment should they need to, if we ever get to an active shooter response. You know, they can share their clips, they are the magazines, they can share their ammo, all those other things there. So. You know, those are improvements we're making into the to the security system. So. So again, we talked about things secured. Medical Plaza, you know, I get the place is dark. We are going to install one hundred forty five LED lights there to make it bright. What we do have on here is the the security number, the eight nine seven eight seven five one. And, you know, we asked that you use that number. For escorts and if you would like to shuttle to bring you, say, to Medical Arts parking lot, which we're willing to do, of course. You know, the thing about always before was when we were lower staffed, it was a longer wait time to get someone to escort you. And I know. You know, people want to get home. I get that. So, you know, we ask for a little patience as we again, increase our staffing. Will be quicker and have lower response time, you know, faster response time to get, you know, escorts out. But you do have to be a little patient because I mean, there is a finite number of people and then maybe escort someone else to shuttle, maybe drop it someone off at Medical Arts already. So if you give it a few minutes and be patient, but you know, we do want you to utilize this to the, you know, please. And again, we're looking at different things there. Like if, you know, let's just say. M eight, you know, has eight people getting off at six thirty and they're all parking in. Medical arts, you know, can we kind of get all them to come together and then we can escort them over? You know, we're always looking at those things and those possibilities again, because again, we want to try to create as safe as an environment as we can. Our day preparedness. So the big point of this slide is we. We have a the ESC system. And so again, we're trying to get prepared as much as we can for hurricanes. And I think, you know, when you talk to the experts in weather, which I'm not one. Talk to the experts and whether they tell you that, you know, the hurricanes that we see in the future, you know, this year and in the future. And again, this year is supposed to be a very active season. You know, are going to be more like what we saw in Idaho where we get. Very little notice, very intense hurricanes. And then what you're going to see here is, you know, because the levy improvements, you're not going to see flooding, but you're going to see roof damage and you see power issues. Down trees blocking streets, a lot of power issues, which will get people coming in back into the city, you know, make it very hard. So. You know, we need to kind of think about that and plan for that. And so, you know, first thing is that we want everybody to register in the ECS system because. That tells us who's team A, tells us who's team B. When it comes time to register everybody on the day of lockdown, you can do it quicker, we can do it easier. You know, we need to make sure we're signing people sleeping space. We need to make sure that we're having enough food and we're, you know, making enough food and dealing with enough food to feed everyone. That's our, you know, obligation here is to provide sleeping and provide food. Also, should, you know, we don't think that would happen, but you have to plan for the worst. Should we have to evacuate via helicopter? We, you know, we have all the information for everybody so we can evacuate by helicopter. Including the dreaded wake question. So, you know, we do want everybody. So we're asking everybody to complete this by June thirtieth. There is a. Raffle prize, but this is something that for for us, it really needs to be completed. And, you know, we have a hurricane preparedness, you know, list here checklist that we're asking everybody to follow. So the first one, of course, is registered ECS system by June thirtieth. Review the hurricane handbook. Two thousand twenty two L C M C hurricane handbook. Basically, you know, if you could put the. Emergency information line, which is the seven oh two thirty seven hundred into your phone. You know, part of what happens is when you go into the all side images before you go into ECS system. You know, that allows you to get the Everbridge messages to your phone via text. Sometimes those messages can be long and complex. So you can also go to the emergency line. And actually listen to all those messages that go through Everbridge, you know, orally. So they are in there. Is get with the game plan is a website for planning and thinking. And again, we want to start planning and thinking about this because again, like I said. You know, I think it's going to be harder and harder to get to the city, which means, you know, if you are. You know, again, have pets or let's say you have elderly parents. You know, team A may not be for you. And what we don't want to do is we don't want. You know, then a major storm to roll up and your your teammate and then you say, well, I can't do teammate because I got to deal with my mom. Well, I mean, we understand, you know. So we need to plan for all that and prepare for all those situations. So. They are asked the COO, normally that'd be Manny up there, picture. Questions.
I saw the weapons free little sign thing up there. Bring their guns in.
Patients cannot. You can bring, the only people that can bring guns in are legitimate law enforcement officers. So the rules are here is that there's actually a state law, the governance, hospitals and schools. And actually, to be honest with you, we're assessing, you know, our signage and kind of have a look at all that because. Signing engines pour across the campus. There's more signage in the hospital, but less the MOBs. And the MOBs are included as part of our campus. So the rules apply there. So state law states that. Unless, even if you're concealed carry permit, you cannot bring a weapon into a hospital. We confiscate weapons all the time. We talk to people all the time. Frank has them escort and put in their car. Now they can keep it in a car. Say Louisiana by state law, your car's extension of your house. So welcome to to read their firearm in their car or keep their firearm in their car. You know, it's in the garage, but they cannot bring weapons to the hospital. Over here. But he had a question about pocket knives. I mean, I don't. I don't think pocket knives are covered by the state law. They probably bring those into the hospital. Legally.
Yeah, I have one. Well, kind of a comment. I had a. Like a test done here, an MRI, and I knew that I was going to have to pay probably a fair amount out of pocket. It was the hardest thing trying to figure out how much I was going to pay out of pocket. I. I went through like the phone chain. I got transferred a million times. It would be really nice to have some sort of site that could, it doesn't even have to be exact, just kind of figure out a way. To know how much you're going to pay because it was anywhere from zero to two thousand dollars. So it's super hard to make a decision.
I mean, it is super hard. And we can look at that. I mean, what's so hard about it is I just depend it upon. Like seven different math factors. It's basically harder than calculus. So, you know, of course, depending on what kind of plan you have, what kind of insurance you have. Then you have a secondary plan, then, you know, where are you at with your deductibles? You know, if you met your out of pocket deductibles. Uh, then you have secondary plan, then you know, where you at with your deductibles, you know, if you met your out of pocket deductibles, also your, your max, but it, you know, you know, most of us, if you have insurance here have they're just ping on, I guess, it could be planned dependent. I know my, I think as an individual, the twenty-five hundred dollar max out of pocket. So we're brought, so whatever happens, I mean, two years ago I had open heart surgery, I paid twenty-five hundred dollars of we end up being about a three hundred thousand dollar bill and stuff like that. So, um, you know, there's a lot of factors that go into it, make it hard. I mean, obviously if anybody ever has questions about their bill, we do have Kerry Marks here, who is our, you know, representative that does a lot of billing issues and I can get her to anyone always and she can maybe help research that if you ever need that. Um, but you know, we'll talk about that. I mean, I get more and more discussions about what uh, you know, as it gets more and more complex, like I just talked about all the factors that go into determining your billing. I mean, I get more and more questions about billing as time goes on. So I do think we need to work on, or I agree with that point. We need to work on a resource to try to help people. I get the question more and more.
I'll tell you one more thing on security. We, um, so the hospital and our adjoining or adjacent medical office buildings has over a million square feet of space. So security can't patrol the garages and that amount of space twenty-four hours a day. So we just, you know, it's, that's not realistic. So what I'll ask you is if you see something, say something, if something looks, doesn't look right, doesn't look normal, just call eight seven five one number and, and you need an escort, um, call that number. So, uh, if you could help us out, that would, you know, it's all of our part to help with security. It's all of our responsibility. So if you could help us out with that.
Anything else? One more?
Are we still a non-smoking facility?
Security, that's actually a subject we probably talked about. Because yes, we are a non-smoking facility and you know, there's a couple of things that frustrate me about, yeah, we are a non-smoking facility, but, um, you know, we do have of course employees that, you know, smoke. And if I completely stopped it from smoking, it would be no different than me like cutting off a appendage or something like that. Um, so, you know, we have a group smoking in the back often, which you know, and so what we're actually talking about, I think some of the strategies, I mean, I've been at places before where because you have people that just have to smoke. Um, you may be set up in a very designated smoking area because what, what, one thing is it is a, me, it's only me, is in a way is the cigarette butts on the ground.
And Ronnie's got to clean them up as the groundskeeper.
You know, it's two things again, you have employees and patients that have to smoke and, um, you know, they, a lot of times we're in the back and we get a lot of complaints from the neighbors and we got cigarette butts there and we got chairs and trash and stuff. So we are talking, I, this is why I ended up doing a mile of the hospital. We actually end up setting up a designated smoking area, even though we're not smoking. You put it you know, far away from the hospital, but at least you can control the, the butts, essentially.
This, 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 this is my, my logic. All right. You know, you got to smoke, you, you, because that's a habit, you put your butt in the cage. And it's just because the, the reason they, they throw it on the ground is because it's, it's nothing, they, they, because there's no repercussions. But if, if you want to smoke, put it in the cage.
So then there's that and any other noises, you have people, you know, that smoke sort of on the pseudo street, it's a city street. So, you know, I've been seeing of course butts out by the street, more closer to the street on front of the hospital. Like that sitting area over there by Buckman, you get where you actually caught Washington yesterday. I get a lot of smoke in there. I get a lot of butts there. Yeah. That's kind of a hard battle because you're ordering line on the city streets.
If, if it was, if it was just patients, it, you know, I, it's more understandable, but employers, that's, that's why, that's, that's the thing that's, that's my, my, it's more employers than than patients that's doing this.
Assuming you say that you could post, uh, more signage about like, uh, weapons, free zone. Uh, there's a way like you could post like the security numbers maybe around the hospital. Because like if I see something, well, I don't got the number to, to like eight zone four four, what do you just say?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, for, for real, for real, I probably like just keep going. Like I try to stay out the cliff. I'm a homie to see my face and you might say like, homie probably called him people on me. So if it's some kind of way like, you know, or like most more like maybe, uh, security numbers around the hospital.
Yeah, actually what, what, what came out of the, uh, the last meeting was that people ask, you know, if we can produce some things to put in all the break rooms. Uh, maybe at the front desk and then also at the clock. So like if you're sincere, punching at the clock and you want to get a security expert, escort, escort. Uh, their numbers right there and you can do that. So we'll work on getting numbers posted. Yes.
So merit increases typically somewhere one point five, two point five percent a year. Way inflation's going and everything, is there any consideration to changing merit increases to?
That is definitely under consideration. In fact, I, um, in a, we'll be in a meeting today, just after talking about that. I, I, I don't know what they're going to do yet, but L C M C's reviewing two, I know they're reviewing two things. I don't, I don't want to promise anything, but I know they're looking at two things. One is, you know, is because of like you said, inflation, does merit need to be higher, uh, to retain people? And then they're, they are looking at benefits. Um, you know, because that's something else we're seeing in the industry. Is people starting to, you know, before the reversal was people are off continuously offering less competitive or less great benefits. And now people to retain people are offering better and better benefits, better retirement match, cheaper insurance. So um, that is something I think they're definitely, I know they're looking at. So hopefully we'll get more and more ants, you know, by the end of the summer, we'll get an answer. I know they have to do all their financial durations and see what they can afford and not afford, but that is definitely something that's being talked about. And I would tell you this, I promise you this, Manny has voiced this to the upper level people, all the CEOs have voiced this concern about this, has been voiced.
And because we're a small crowd, everybody gets one.
That's why I should come to the seven thirty meeting. Thank you. I appreciate it.